Six o'clock, so I'll call this meeting or? Yeah, welcome everyone. This, as you've heard, this meeting is being recorded for the city's YouTube channel. We'll start off with a local place, state your name, Mary Ann, Mary Ann.
Nicole, Dan was here, Mike here, Tom here.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, the needed agenda. You said it?
Sorry.
So, all fair.
I, I, I.
Thank you. We have one quick item number five to take care of before we move on to the main topic. Something you want to talk about number five.
Um, Joe had just made out the invoice wrong to refund a group that had paid a $500 deposit. When they got the check, it said, uh, this isn't supposed to be met out to us. So, um, he would like to, uh, they'll bring in the other check, avoid it and issue a check the right place that actually did pay the deposit. So it's just approving this invoice for 500 to TBT Sports.
Motion, sorry.
All fair.
Bye. Bye.
Thank you. Moving on to item number six, because that's in the Iowa land building preliminary plat and development agreement. Shane's going to start us off with sharing some information and then we'll open it up for some discussion.
Yeah, so Cynthia, you want to pull up the the Plumer Plaid I sent today? Everybody will ask, yeah.
Is it easier for you to do it from the table rather than this one? Okay.
Yes. So I, I have a, the Plumer Plaid, I have the Plumer Plaid on the table in front of everybody. And I just want to run through that, so it makes clear what Iowa land building that's holding here. And, uh, what some of the improvements that will need to be done, that is part of the Plumer Plaid, so. Um, first of all, the, uh, Plumer Plaid area is, is outlined in a pink highlight. And there's, there's eight lots there, lots one through eight. Wow. The, uh, adjacent to the Plumer Plaid to the north and northwest of it is the logistics park Cedar Rapids, and that's highlighted in yellow. Um, westly portion of that is the Traverel site. And just east of Traverel is the Regen site, um, Traverel's been open now for a couple of years, operated for a couple of years, Regen, I think just opened here in the last few months. Um, Traverel, um, services, um, to the west, the sanitary sewer that runs south along Left Beer Road, and they sewer to that, they service to that sewer main. Regen does too, but they have a little grinder pump and they pump to that station because they sit two loads of service in. Some of you may recall that, and that's temporary when we get the lift station in, they're gonna have to tie onto that. Um, so right now, there's sewer and water that's highlighted along the west side of, uh, the Traverel site, um, along the east side of Left Beer Road. And those are currently in to the southwest corner of the Traverel site. Um, there's a sanitary sewer that's stubbed in at the north corner of the Traverel site. Uh, so the, uh, as part of the preliminary plat, Iowa land building is proposing a big Cedar Court, you can see that, it's located on the east side of, composed lot three. On the west side of, oh, lots four, five and six. And that would be extended, um, to the southeast corner of the logistics park Cedar Rapids site. And it would, uh, ultimately, at some point, provide connectivity or secondary access for the logistics park Cedar Rapids. Is there any questions with the general layout of Plumer Plaid? Okay. So, along with the Plumer Plaid, uh, Iowa land building had a traffic impact analysis prepared. So we got that a couple of weeks ago, went through that, reviewed that. There were, I think, eleven considerations and recommendations based on that. We'll run through those.
Are you on the memo?
Yeah, the memo, so you pull up the memo. Traffic engineer and I reviewed their considerations and recommendations.
What?
Memo traffic analysis.
Sorry, I can't read those.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So, in the in the original, um, traffic analysis, the traffic engineer identified or indicated that, uh, opening day, they, I mean, obviously, it's all planned, these aren't known for sure, but their planning was opening day to be in 2025. It was approved to build out of lots one through five, but we all know lots one through five are not going to be built out by 2025. So, what we anticipate would be maybe a twenty year build out, lots one through five being built out in about ten years, and then lots six through eight, we build out in years ten to twenty. Uh, again, we don't know that, but we have to have some sort of basis for planning, you know, how this improvement's getting done, and when we anticipate that we get done. So. Um, lot number one, so Cynthia, if you go back to the documents I sent today, there's the two convergence site plans.
Uh, which?
You can open both of them back, so you open the concept plan first. So they, the traffic engineer, they're this analysis based off convergence concept planned, and first recommendation would be to get rid of those two or revise the norvali access points there, there's two and they're too close. Um, so they recommend combining those or spreading them out so there's further spacing between them. Well, that was a concept plan that they spent a while back, they since submitted a site plan here in the last couple of weeks. And that is to be open the other exhibit. Cynthia. That reflects that they have combined those two in north entrances to the lot. That's the Plumer Plaid would be the other one.
That one?
That one. It's kind of busy, but.
Nice.
Yeah, so they've got one access on the north side, and they have no immediate access, it's proposed off of seventy-six, it wraps around Tyson to the south side of Left Beer Road. So, that comment has been addressed with the, the site plan that was submitted. Um, the second new comment that they had, um, is the, they, they recommend that seventy-sixth Avenue is improved to a three lane roadway with the center two way left turn lane. The timing of that, obviously, needs to be determined. But there is some flexibility, um, based on the development along there. There's other things to consider with that, more, more detail. Third condition just talks about stop, um, conditions along intersections and entrances. Uh, the fourth condition talks about widening Left Beer Road to a three lane roadway with a center two way left, left turn lane between East South B Road and Seventy-sixth Avenue. The timing for that is, we anticipate it probably happens when the property to the west side of Left Beer Road develops. So that's long term, obviously, we don't know for sure, but we anticipate that'd be ten to twenty years out. We'll talk more about that further down here. Um, the fifth condition just talks about adjusting the posted speed limits as development happens, same thing as, I think, along Left Beer Road. The sixth condition talks about adjusting posted speed limits along Seventy-sixth Avenue, is, is development occurs along Seventy-sixth. The seventh edition talks about left turn lane on, um, so we go back to the traffic, there's the actual exhibit that goes with the.
It's with the memorandum?
Yeah. That's the memo, I don't know if it was attached, that's probably separate. But it's basically the exhibit I have on the table sitting next to the Plumer Plaid. Um, is there a Left Beer Road? Improvement exhibit or something like that, I can't think of the words, or yeah, there it is. So, the seventh condition recommends a, uh, southbound left turn lane from Left Beer Road on to Seventy-sixth Avenue, and on that exhibit, that'd be highlighted in the red. And it also recommends a northbound right turn lane from Left Beer Road on to Seventy-sixth Avenue, and that would be highlighted in green on that exhibit. Uh, the, uh, the blue that's highlighted on that would be the best of condition number four, be the, the continuous, you know, three lane roadway wide, even the center two way left turn lane. That would be the blue section of that exhibit. Hmm. So, moving on in the traffic report recommendations and considerations. Item number eight talks about the southbound right turn lane along Left Beer Road and not to.
Sorry, did you want to go back to what I had up?
No, this is fine, that doesn't, it doesn't. What did you end up with, frankly? So, condition number eight talks about along the, at the intersection of Wright Brothers Boulevard and Left Beer Road, talks about westbound right turn lane. For Wright Brothers Boulevard on the left, Left Beer Road. It looks like that. I think the traffic report indicates that it's currently warranted, our information shows that it's right at the edge of being parted. Basically, the first development to occur in the big tree, a big cedar industrial center would cause that improvement to be warranted. Then again, that intersection's well outside the city jurisdiction, and, and, yeah, then kind of, then at this point, or not. Uh, condition number nine, it also applies to that same intersection, it's southbound right turn lane from Left Beer Road on to Wright Brothers Boulevard. That one isn't warranted, you know, review of our traffic engineer, review of the analysis, looking at some things. It's more of a convenience type thing, it's not a safety thing, it's where majority of the traffic that's heading down Left Beer Road is gonna hang a left on Wright Brothers Boulevard. You don't have a specific right turn lane, it's just they're gonna be queued in that traffic, majority of traffic's gonna turn left, and they have a great turn right. Convenience, it's not warranted. With the build out of the big cedar industrial center. And number ten, also at that intersection, it's the eastbound left turn lane. So traffic at east, Wright Brothers Boulevard turning north. Yeah, that's now warranted based on our review, uh, at this time. That's posed at this time, a big cedar industrial center. And condition number eleven of the traffic study was that they recommend that the, uh, the, the southbound lanes, that there's two southbound lanes added to the, uh, big cedar court that's part of the Plumer Plaid plan. So that then you'd have a right turn and a left turn lane and have a portion of two for, for truck storage from industrial site. And, uh, that has been updated on the Plumer Plaid to reflect that, issues and big cedar board. So any questions with the traffic impact analysis?
So these are all just your recommendations, is that correct?
It's, it's, it's the, so, interesting, well, we compared it. And then we reviewed it, and that's, yeah, that memo was our recommendation based on their traffic analysis and their recommendations. Have any of these recommendations been shared in Flint County yet? They have not. Any other questions, comments, thoughts with, uh, traffic impact analysis? So you're on priority, priority number one. Eight seventy-six. East to the city limits, how far does that go in that particular plant, does that go past that? So this just pertains, so the city's corporate limits is the east side of this Plumer Plaid.
Is the east.
Okay, and, and Cedar Rapids has annexed to that. So right now, that is a shared property line. A corporate line between the city of Fairfax and the city of, so that would be the east to the extent of less, somewhere a long time down the road, something changes. That would be the east to the extent of the city's portion of Seventy-sixth Avenue. That's where our discussion came in of, do we pay world playing, or do we just go where convergence is, wait. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna run through the conditions and the development agreement. To talk more about that. You know, staff's recommendation and things considered with that. So if you want, go ahead, Cynthia, and pull up the, uh, development agreement that I sent you up the link yesterday. So, yeah, that first paragraph just kind of describes the project, if you go down to number one there. So the first items we talked about, uh, items one and two are the, are related to the sanitary sewer facilities. Uh, so condition number one is specific to extending the sanitary sewer down Left Beer Road to service lots one and two. So, like I mentioned before, the existing sewer and the existing water are, have been installed to the south edge of the Traverel site. And so to service lots one and two, the sewer would just have to be extended south. We have it being shown to, to be stubbed south of, uh, Seventy-sixth Avenue, that we don't have to tear that intersection in the future extended. Uh, the, uh, the thought on something like that, where it's a pretty minor extension that the owner would install those improvements, to design it, install it, and, and now remember, the owner we're referring to is Iowa land building. Now, I know convergence looking at, at lot one, so Iowa land building, you know, importantly with conversion on that, they can pass that responsibility off to them. But, you know, for the purposes of the Plumer Plaid, for the owner, it's gonna be Iowa land building. That we include with that, or have any questions? So, the owner would be responsible for extending that sewer and, uh, and then what we're proposing is that the city would use TIF dollars for the development of one of those lots, or those two lots, to reimburse the owner. Uh, or basically the city's portion, so the, there's a, there's existing sewer connection fees from sewer water project that in twenty twenty-one that extended down Fort Traverel, there would be some participation, you know, for that project, and that they would have some participation with this superextension.
Shane, have you done the math on all these, to what that, what you think the projected extensions would be less, but?
We've got some, some rough numbers, Cynthia will run through those, you can do that now, or we can talk about that later.
We can talk about it later, I guess, it's just that you, it's all, everything's like, there's no amounts in here, so there's no idea what the cost, and the reimbursements would be.
Yeah. So, basically, the owner installs it through TIF reimbursement, the city would repay the owner for those costs, less the connection fee to that superextension. Any questions to that, other than cost at this point? The, uh, number two is basically the lift station, so if you go over to the northeast side of the site, there's a lift station, uh, that's shown on lot seven, northeast portion of lot seven. So what we're proposing is that the city would install a lift station, uh, and things that would go along with that would be the force main, so there's a green line that's highlighted, they go west of that, the station, having the force main, the station that would tie into the gravity sewer, that's, that's currently located in the northwest corner of that Traverel site. And there's the lift station, and then there's the gravity main that runs south along the creek of the lift station down to Seventy-sixth Avenue. That's all highlighted in green. And then there would be the access, there's an access drive that's highlighted in purple, and water main, uh, flush that, that lift station extended down from the cul-de-sac to that. Those are the general items that are part of that project. So as I mentioned earlier, Traverel, from the sewer standpoint, they service to the sanitary sewer that's located in Left Beer Road. Lots one and two can do the same, but the site falls to the north into the, to the, I'm sorry, yeah, to the north and northeast, so you get east of those lots. They'll fall back to that lift station, and be brought back up to the sewer that's in Left Beer Road. So Regen currently has a grinder pump, and they pump it back up to the sewer um, south of Traverel, but the sewer main that's located in Left Beer Road, for the agreement we had with them, the station gets put in, they have to hook up to that. And then obviously, any development that would happen east of Regen on the Iowa, excuse me, I mean Iowa, I'm sorry, on the, the logistics park Cedar Rapids property, east of Regen. All would go to that lift station. And then for the big cedar industrial center, lots three, four, five, six, seven and eight, with all services to that. So basically, any development on lots three, four, five, six, seven and eight, or on the logistics park Cedar Rapids property, east or Regen site, will trigger the need for that station. Any questions for that? Thoughts, comments?
Shane, so how does that work then, like, if, if someone uh, someone picks one of these and puts something up, then how, none of this other roadway or this other stuff is in, how do we
Well.
Put the road and the lift station back in the middle of someplace that's not developed?
So if let's say the logistics parks, you'd have this partial, just these are Regen developed. First, before anything else, let's say convergence goes in a lot one, but they don't get that sewer right. But then let's say the next thing to develop is the logistics park Cedar Rapids property east of Regen, well, they're gonna have to extend that existing drive, I look at Plummer Plaid Sculptor Barrel Road. They're gonna have to extend that water main to service them, they're gonna have to extend the drive to service them. We would require them as part of their site plan, you to extend that over. Basically, right now, it's shown coming off of that big cedar core, it may be adjusted slightly, it's shown, it's the plan document, it will change some in the future if it don't happen. This is what we're working on. So they'd have to extend it, and then basically extend it, so that's how the city would have access to the big water to them. Now, if anything occurred on lots three through eight on the big cedar industrial site, part of the condition with that is they have to install the big cedar core. And with that, they put in the water main, the water main would have to be extended over southeast, or a lot one, and bridge by, and where they come off that cul-de-sac and access and extend that one.
So we, would we be responsible then for creating that access road as well?
The access room that, that's highlighted in purple would be part of, of the lift station. The cul-de-sac would be the owner's responsibility, the Iowa land building's responsibility, and the water main along the cul-de-sac. So that's just like, you know, any other development, Heartland Heights, you know, they're responsible for putting in the public street. It's the same type of thing, but they'd be responsible for that street. And that'd be cost, you know, that they would pass on to their the industry, businesses that purchase their lots. And so what we're proposing is the city would do the sewer uh, project for the station force main, gravity main access, because then water main, that's it. And then that Iowa land building would have a connection fee. The, uh, logistics parks, Cedar Rapids would have connection fee. And then ultimately, those connection fees, this development occurs to the south, they'll have to pay connection fee at the time. And what we're proposing in that is that at the time that city's doing that project Iowa land and building as the owner would pay their connection fees. I think the way I had it worded in there that, so they'd have to pay the connection fees for this twenty-one sanitary sewer extension project. And they would pay those connection fees when the city enters into an agreement for the side of that. So, uh, and then I think they pay seventy-five percent when the contract is aborted, construction, and then a built out. Uh, part of the thing, and some of you may recall, when we did Heartland Heights, or even when we did the Traverel project, at least. The, the sewer obviously is a timing thing, so you don't need to put it in until there's a demand for it. But once there's a demand, they need it on day one when it opened. So, we'll talk about like the turn lanes later, you know, that's, that's not so much a demand thing, it's like, yeah, we're getting enough traffic, we'll go ahead and do it, but it's not like I needed lots of that. Where this sewer project, you know, let's say, you know, somebody wants to come in and build on lot three, eight, four, five or six, well, they need that sewer in. They're like, we plan on opening in eighteen months, you know, that's, they spent, say, a plan, and that's, well, so then we need to work with them to get that project in in eighteen months, well, you know, if it's the why first, if you've already done your budget for that year, you're watching the year out before you get the funding for it, if you don't have that year, so that's right, why I had in there to, that they participate in some of that upfront, when they get the connection for twenty twenty-one, so then, see, you have a little bit of money now to sign speeches, sewer connections. Any other questions with that, Ross?
I'll just chime in briefly, Justin Turner, Iowa land and building company, uh, also Judge Norvich, Norvich Bazi is here, he designed the site, and Emily Kaiser, who's the key account manager for Iowa land and building company, aligned energy, uh, I'll probably chime in a little bit as we go forward, but just as we're talking about the list station in particular, obviously, there's a lot of coordination between Iowa land and building company, city of Fairfax, Traverel, which is a part of Cedar Rapids Regen. And that's where we kind of had a, a reset three weeks ago or so, where we had a really productive meeting, uh, with Iowa land and building company, Shane, and city staff, and Traverel, just to make sure everyone kind of understood and maybe needed to be reminded that, hey, if something happens up here, you know, it affects us and vice versa, because it's while Traverel and Iowa land and building company and aligned energy are kind of one happy family, they are different business entities with different, you know, they Decision-making bodies, so we need to make sure we're on the same page, so that was a very productive meeting, thanks Shane and the city for setting that up and. We continue, you know, to have that dialogue and discussion and subsequent to this, the new recommendations, we need to follow back up with logistic, our Cedar Rapids and Trabero, to make sure that. You know, they understand. The scenario, and they generally do, they're, they're having, you know, um, uh, some turnover over there as well as to make sure that they understand them, but. They're not a party to this proposed development agreement, which is important for us all to understand and. Really could complicate it even more to add them as a party, so I think as a big, bigger happy family, we're better off communicating internally, but. Just as Shane's explaining this, obviously, there's a lot of cross-moving parts that have been initially addressed and will continue to be addressed as we move forward, so. So I wanted to add up.
Thanks Dustin.
Any other questions, thoughts with the? Sanctuary sewer. So then on uh. Page three, water main facilities. Condition number three. Similar to uh, it's came to lot nine and two. Is similar to the sewer extension for lots one and two, uh. The owner would extend the sewer of the lot, sorry, we're talking water right now. The owner would extend the water main, where it's currently at, southwest corner of the Trabero site, they extended down along left of your road. And. They would extend it east along seventy sixth avenue to the southeast corner of lot one. That's where that, that blue line is kind of. Cross through there, so that's where their water main would extend to, and it would end at that point for lots one and two. Be the same type of thing where the owner puts it in, and then the city reimburses them for their construction costs. Uh, less connection fees, with TIF reimbursement. Then. Next, number four, condition number four. Is a similar type thing, uh. And again, we don't know exactly what lot's going to be built next, um, so the language is somewhat general. But the water main would be extended then from that point, east along seventy six, ultimately over to the east southeast corner of lot A, which is also the city's corporate limits. And then it would be extended north along the uh. Big Cedar Court. Up to basically that. Corner property line, the southeast corner of the logistics park Cedar Rapids in that area. And so that when. That development. Happens on the logistics park Cedar Rapids, they can extend that water main and tie it in. Uh, that water main. Long dead end water main is not desirable, um, you'd like them to connect, to keep the water flowing through it, um. Gives you duplicity, if, if, um, if you have long dead end water mains, a lot of them just sitting there, it'll stagnate. Right now, we don't have a lot of big users, so that is a problem, so we had, so we'd like to see those ones connected. But. As Dustin mentioned, you know, that's a separate entity. You know, their responsibility would be getting into the, basically to that property line, and then when. The logistics park Cedar Rapids, it develops their property, they would tie in, extend it. Now, if they do their property, the development first. They'd extend it over and service it, and then. If. This happens second after that, then they would have to tie into it, I plan to go in that, tie into it, but. And again. The section of the water main that's in the big cedar core would be the responsibility of Iowa Land and Building. The water main that's going along seventy sixth avenue. Would also be the owner's responsibility, but then. The city's thought is that the city could reimburse them for TIF re, reimbursement, just like they did for lots one and two. Less than the owner's connection fees. So. Any questions to that?
So this, so this includes on the south side of seventy sixth avenue as well as that?
The water main will be located at the north side, but yes, it would service property to the south.
So you're just talking like a stub line over there, or?
Well, right, well.
It wasn't, it wasn't.
So it would, it would be extended south, uh, um. You know, when the water main gets extended far enough to the east. We would extend water main south on Maple Grove Road. So there'd be a stub to the south.
At that point.
Yeah, and we're stubbing it south, also when the water mains extended.
Um, at the intersection?
So if the conversion site does happen, yeah, lot one, at the intersection with seventy sixth left of your road. We are asking them to extend that south of seventy six, so it's stubbed there.
Stubbed over, okay.
Yeah. But yeah, if somebody wants to develop on the south side, and then they're just gonna extend and service across, they're gonna have to go underneath seventy six and tap into it, or. Or if it's a big enough that it'll be made or something, that would be in the future, but we don't want to just put something in. In the mid-block where. We have no ideas, that's, you know, if it'll be necessary in the future, but yeah. Good question, and on those two roadways, we are both stubbed them south as part of that extension. Right, any other questions with the water main? Right, moving on. We want the condition number twelve on the big cedar porch.
Um, did you skip over easements and?
Yeah, I skipped over all that stuff, right on, just talking. We can go back and run through that stuff a little bit at the end. But, um, so. Basically, condition, excuse me, condition number twelve, we're talking about big cedar core, now we, we've talked about this, but that condition is just. Pointing out that the owner is responsible for designing, constructing big cedar board. Um, and then that would be needed, and development occurs on lot, any of lots three through eight. That's basically what that, the direction seemed. Any questions or comments on that? Okay.
Shane, but, yeah, just real briefly, there's, in the event. Trabero, one of the. Discussion points we had when we met with Trabero and logistic park Cedar Rapids in the city, and had some dialogue about is. You know, in the event that this Trabero drive, the private drive would be extended east to the property line, and big cedar core would be. Extended north to the Iowa Land and Building Company property line that. There were potentially, Trabero is very concerned about public traffic just running through their logistics park, I mean, they're unloading trucks, liability, it's a private drive, it's basically a driveway now, so we had. You know, corresponded with Shane and the city about potentially, if that connection ultimately would happen, and it allows public to go through there, that. There would be a controlled access gate there, that the city would have access to in Trabero, and then potentially Iowa Land and Building Company, it's basically for emergency services, and. The city was in agreement with that, so just, I don't, I don't think that was. In the document here, but we talked about it, so just, it's not a surprise if and when it happens.
So, somebody's clear, and Dustin's correct. The, the Trabero drive is a, is a private drive. As Dustin mentioned. The big cedar core would be a public street that, when they get it, just like all public streets, when they get it designed for the city standards, and get it built and constructed for the city standards, and the city accepts it, then. They're dedicated to the city, the city would want to be taken on, own it, maintain it, and obviously it's all public. So. A, a couple of things from, um, from a safety concern standpoint. You know, right now, you're looking at. Two, two properties, Trabero, Regen, and possibly a couple more, long-term down road, maybe three or four more. That access off that, you know, hopefully it wouldn't happen, and you also have possible railroad spurs extending across there, so. You know, if you have an accident, you have trains sitting there, or anything, you know, the city's like, we want secondary access for emergency purposes, which. I don't think anybody is denying that, but to, to Trabero's concern and logistics park Cedar Rapids, they don't want people just cutting through there either. So if, if a gate is put in there, it would be put on a private drive, not on the public street, and it'd be on the Trabero, be able to logistics park Cedar Rapids, so. That would be something that would be conditioned to the logistics park Cedar Rapids site, not to the primary platform. I mean, to Dustin's point, that was discussed. And is a concern there, so. All right, moving on then to seventy sixth avenue improvement, so that's condition number twenty one. So. What staff is recommending is to design and construct seventy sixth avenue. Full width, forty one foot, three, three lane, forty, forty one foot wide, back to back, back curve to back curve. From, uh, left beer road. To the east corporate limits, uh, the east boundary of this primary flat. So these improvements would be designed, constructed by the city. They, there would be participation from the owner. And right now, what we have requested, or what we're recommending, I should say, on part of the development region, is that the owner would participate at three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So the overall project estimate's at about five million, one hundred and twenty thousand for seventy sixth happening. Their participation would amount to three hundred and sixty thousand, it'd just be a lump sum.
Talk a little bit about how we came up with that amount?
Yeah. So that amount is basically what we've typically done for participation. From property owners is. Twenty five percent, so when. When Trabero did their development. And if you recall, Lynn County did the Omenay project, and the city participated in that for the portion, it's in the city of Fairfax. And uh. It's basically fifty percent of the adjacent roadway, which if you're doing full roadway, it'd be twenty five percent for the property on one side, in this case, the north side. Twenty five percent for the property in the south side, and in the city we have fifty percent, twenty five percent on both sides. That was same thing with Trabero, um, that project, the westernly portion of the road in Lynn County, so the city didn't have any participation in that. So the city had fifty percent participation for the east half, Trabero had fifty percent of that. So that's, that's how we were looking at it, it was twenty five percent. How we came up with the three hundred and sixty thousand was then. Applying a rise grant, and we came up with a, you know. Planning number of, I think. One point eight million, something like that. And then half of that going to. The owner, Iowa Land and Building, and the half going to, um. City of Fairfax. And that's where it came over three hundred and sixty thousand. So if we're also going to build that in twenty twenty five, I'm sorry, twenty twenty six. Constructed in twenty twenty six, to, you know, we're constructing in twenty twenty five at this point, but. To start design on that, as soon as we get. Everything signed off and good to go, preferably sometime this fall, get it. Designed and constructed then in twenty twenty six. So. Also with that. The number we came up with, three hundred and sixty thousand is based off of rise. But in looking into rise. In more details. We don't think this is very good application for, and city staff recommendations that we may not pursue rise grant. And, and the primary reasons for that is. And then we touched on it a little bit, but. So there's, there's two options, there's immediate opportunity, so if there's a company coming in. You know, you can approve the roadway, rise grants are specific to roadway improvements. You can approve the roadway, uh. Then you can get rise grant money based on the number of high-quality jobs from that business. So, you know, we looked at that opportunity with Convergent, well, Convergent, they've got some. High quality jobs, you know, that they pay a certain hourly wage or above. Uh, but there's not a whole lot of numbers, it's, it's not like they're bringing in two or three hundred employees. Um, and also, based on their site plan, they're not even eligible because they're not accessing all seventy six. So that, that's not even an option for product at this point in time. And the other opportunity is, is basically economic development, it's speculative, so you put in this road and, and then, you know, the. The adjacent property, adjacent lots, you can speculate that they're gonna develop. Those businesses have to be rise eligible businesses, which means they have to bring out-of-state dollars into the state of Iowa. So it's not just bringing a business from out of state into Iowa, but. The product they sell has to be sold outside of the state and bring in out-of-state dollars on a regular basis. Um. So. Obviously, there's, there's not. Clear guidance, it's kind of basically on the administrator, the rise grant administrators. How they wanna see it work. So we don't know if. All of these lots would have to be developed as wise eligible businesses, or just ones that are immediately adjacent to it. The other part of it is, if they aren't developed as rise eligible businesses, then the city. Would likely have to pay some of that rise grant back to the state.
Possibly all of it.
Possibly all of it, that's something they don't spell out, so it's one of those things where. If we did that, and we're like, okay. You know. Oh, something I should point out too, since it's only on adjacent. Half of the property, or half of the roadway. We have to do at least fifty percent of the, the roadway, so since we're only doing development on, the rise grant would be tied on this primary flat. We'd have to meet it on a hundred percent of these properties, not just fifty percent, and so. So, let's say Convergent met that, building builds, and then. Let's say lot three meets it, let's say lot eight meets it, but then let's say lot four doesn't. And that happens eighteen years after the road opens up, they can come back and say, pay back all the rise grant, it's not a percentage of the businesses, or not how long they've been there, it's just. No, you didn't meet it, so. You know, pay back fifty percent, pay back a hundred percent, it's kind of what they feel like at the time. So city staff is just not comfortable putting the city in that position. And also then, you know. If. Iowa Land and Building isn't. Required to it, because the agreements in the city and state, not the developer. But, you know, then the city may be looking, Iowa Land and Building's going, yeah, you're bringing in business, but it's not the right business, it's gonna cost us a lot, so. It, it, it just puts the city in a position, I guess, staff's not comfortable. But ultimately, it's, it's your choice, it's the council. That's our recommendation.
And since, you know. We had come up with that three sixty for them using the rise, we felt if we could make the money flow with TIP. That we shouldn't increase their three sixty per, participation, based on the fact that we decided not to go for the ride, so that it's not a good fit. That we can get the funds through TIP to, instead of the rides.
So. I have a question, so what's the push to put the road through, if now they don't even have access on seventy six, and now they're paving a road, that's. No need whatsoever at this point.
Sounds very good question. So, yeah, I mean, if you look at it. Me as an engineer, I look at it, okay. You don't need it until something develops along the road, right? You know, convergence access is all coming off left of your road, and you'll show a future access coming off of it, that's certainly not happening on day one. So why not wait? Until something happens. Uh, there's a couple of issues with that, so. If something happens on lots three through eight, now all of a sudden you gotta put in. The roadway, you gotta put in the lift station, and you've also got the construction of that site ongoing on that once. So it's just kind of a mess, it also puts the city in a tight spot. Trying to get everything designed and constructed at one time, so that's, that's one thing to consider. Um, another major thing to consider with it is TIF dollars. So right now. You know, the city certified the Trabero site, the Regen site, to TIP. Two or three years ago, I think it probably started, there's a twenty-year life on that, so. There's TIF dollars that are there, now, does everybody understand what TIF dollars are?
Did we certify the entire area, or just the Trabero section?
Just the Trabero section.
So we haven't actually started the TIP clock on any of the rest of this?
No, we haven't, but we're, uh, next, we're working through the urban renewal plan and adding that, those things into the plan.
No, we haven't, but we're uh next, we're working through the urban renewal plan and adding that those things into the plan. And then, once the development happens and we, as soon as we certify the first time in that new area, that starts the clock.
Yeah, or another for twenty years, just for that, this new area separate from.
Yeah, so may, maybe what that looks like is if Convergent starts moving forward, we certify lots one and two. And not the whole community plant, but just certify one and two and. And then that area sort of, but. But I think the Regen site was part of the Traver site, wasn't it, so yeah, that's something I may have to back and look at.
Right, I, I'm certain it was. And so it's time to clock, yeah, it's time to clock, it's already started, it started with, when we certified Traver.
So the TIP dollars. If, if the city doesn't have a project, it doesn't certify for it, they don't get the extra dollars, so the TIP dollars. And maybe you all know this, but the TIP dollars, the city, if they use it. They get the county and the schools portion of those dollars generated from Traver region. But they have to use it towards specific projects, so right now, there's dollars out there not being used.
And the clock's ticking.
And the clock's ticking, so and obviously.
Were we using for some, for the utility extensions?
I think there's some of the Traver's being used, but not all of it.
Right.
And then none of the Regen's being used, so.
How much isn't being realized? Oh, later on then.
Yeah, well, we can go over it now, but uh. Right now, fiscal twenty five, twenty six, there's. A million four unclaimed. And that's without the Regen, um, cause Maggie didn't add that in, um, cause that was just. Completed um this year, and so it wouldn't be on the tax rolls till January of twenty five. And so it's, there's an eighteen month lay. So the mon- the money is there um. To pay for the road. Uh for the city's portion. And. Do you wanna talk about the county's participation?
So you can use the, I'm sorry, you can use a tip from Traverum region and apply that to Seventy Sixth?
Yeah.
That's the whole, that's the whole purpose, tip was created, it was to help incentivize commercial industrial development.
So it's not just for that, okay?
No, but it's, I mean, this is. To Dustin's point, I mean, Traver, they're just expressing, it happens in different entity, but it's, they're the same road. This is all the industrial part of Fairfax, right, so using dollar, TIP dollars from the industry, you know, from these industries. To help um. Provide the infrastructure for this entire area is. Is the basis for TIP.
And that one point four, that's total TIP dollars in the city that we're not claiming, so you generate um. TIP dollars in any part of our urban renewal area, it can be used for any project in the urban renewal area.
When, when it includes Seventy Sixth, I would bring. So then after that. After that twenty years is up, like Traver, then in Regen, you can't use those TIP dollars, if you don't certify them, so if you wait five, six, seven years till Seventy Sixth is needed, there's five, six, seven years of TIP dollars they. And then, obviously, when new development happens in this, this industrial part, more TIP dollars will come available. So that's, that's really the, the thinking behind it is the driving, you know, the recommendation to, to build that as soon as possible. Is, I mean, TIP's the big reason, but it's also one of those things where. You wanna do all of them at one time, when the sewer and the water has to go in, construction and that road is happening. Where you want it in place, there's county participation, it's not a big number, it's roughly two hundred thousand at this time. You know, if we don't commit to a project in a certain timeframe. You know, the county had plans to improve that roadway for the county standards. Those dollars are dollars that they've committed to this project, if we do it, if we don't commit to the project, then those funds will likely go away at least proportionally. So those are. Those are the primary reasons we're recommending, go ahead, you mean that at this time?
So Shane, why not go just to Big Cedar Court? Now you, you've got. Four, five, six. And seven. Can still develop. Potential not eight.
I mean, it's, it's definitely an option. Again, I mean, there's the TIP dollars, there's the county participation. And that's up to you, the city's recommendation is, is doing the full length.
Yeah.
And it's never gonna get cheaper to do that last layer.
And do we need, and that's on fact of the same thing, do we need three lanes through there?
That's what the traffic analysis said.
They didn't say that for anything, like if they said, like, so Cedar Rapids says they need the same design standard. And Seventy Sixth Avenue and Edgewood Road all the way over along the Big Cedar is gravel. So they haven't done anything yet, and Edgewood Road is two lane, right in front of Google. They haven't done, so they're not even doing what they're supposed to be doing.
My, it's Seventy Sixth from going east from Edgewood to.
If you go the other way, it is, but that's all, that's been, and you know, there's development on half of it, half of it's still farm ground. But nothing this way on Big Cedar. And then the other way is not Big Cedar, it's just this, the area that is Big Cedar is all gravel. And the others are all two lane. So they haven't done anything.
They are, I've talked with Cedar Rapids in the area, but then they're gonna move for forty one foot, three lanes, just like this. But.
They just haven't done it yet, neither have we, I mean, there's, these things take years to play them.
I'm just saying, we're not Cedar Rapids.
I look at the size of lot three, thirty, seven acres, you look at size of lot six. Five and four, we're looking at all less than five acres, what's gonna go in there that. Would necessitate three lanes, cause man, that's a question I have too, but if, if you get down. Farther to lot eight, that's, that's huge, fifty eight, and. You don't know what's gonna go there, I mean, and you don't know when you're, when it's gonna build out, so. Me, I have a hard time building it out the whole way when I get TIP dollars, but. Do you do any of it, I understand the incentive that you got a road there, gonna help with incentive in.
Right, it's gonna help with the development.
So. Then I look at, okay, do we just do Big Cedar Court right up to there? Where we're using some TIP dollars. Well, I'll. Using TIP to pay for that. But. I think that's for jumping around, but from, what's the projected cost of the road, the sand sewer? And water, as it stands going out to the uh city boundary. Roughly.
To get everything installed?
Yeah. Did I hear five million earlier?
Was five and a half million, it's just for the road.
I think the water main is four thirty, is that right, Shane?
For the water main along Seventy Sixth, it's four thirty. We didn't have a specific number for the water main along left pier and the south side, we'll have to, that was being planned into the TIP rebate.
So let's be generous and say six and a half million. Then we subtract three hundred and sixty thousand for. Uh only participations, just take it down to that. It's uh. To around.
Well, they're gonna pay for half of that.
The ring sanitary sewer too.
And then two hundred thousand from this uh council. For the road. Then one point four in. It does, right?
Well, that's just water, the road, we still have sanitary sewer to run, right?
Yeah, that one point four is, what I told you is the current unclaimed one. Um, so when uh we had Maggie run uh. A geo schedule for just the road part. Following our recommendation, why did that disappear? Um, the payments would be four hundred and twenty five thousand a year approximately. And um then. She projected um. What, three years later for the water main. Um to rebate that, um that back would be forty three thousand a year. And then about that same time, um the uh sewer. Geo, um for, it'd be about three hundred thousand a year. And she projected out um the TIP. Dollars. All she added in was the approximate ten point five million for Convergent, she did not add Regen, and she has no growth. You know, so she doesn't have any other new development in there. And the lowest that we go down in unclaimed TIP dollars is half of, almost five hundred and forty five thousand. But that's just one year, and then it's. It's at a little under seven hundred thousand for three years, and, and then it creeps back up to. Over a million of unplanned TIP dollars. And she has calculated, you know, some time, like the uh. Residential development, if it's on a ten year or fifteen year clock, you know, them coming off, she's, she's tracked all that, that's what we pay her for. And so there's money to, uh and then plus, she's put in here to um. If Convergent does happen, remember, we said we would um rebate. Property taxes through the, if they eventually sign the agreement with the Iowa Economic Development. That's about six hundred and ninety thousand, I think, and then our current estimate of what we would repay them for the utility extensions is five hundred and seventy five. So we show just on the TIP, they would generate on the ten point five. That's the only dollars that we're gonna consider rebating to them, and so they would get two hundred and forty two, five, which is about what that would generate. For one, two, three, four, five years, and then just a little bit extra that last year to. Finish out the utility costs, and then we would also certify what our legal costs are to set up all the documents and stuff. And so. All of that, we still, the lowest we get to is five hundred and forty. Unused TIP dollars, we're still. Well above what we would be.
Nothing in this preliminary flat agreement. Add in there for TIP dollars?
That's the sewer, the water main, the road, and Convergent.
Lift station and everything too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or thing?
It doesn't include the left of your road, because that was done before we got that traffic study. Um, so we'll have to update those numbers to get a little bit better. But, but to Cindy's point, those numbers also don't include the valuation for Regen, correct?
Correct.
And I don't know if that's something she can add in, um. When, you know, we do.
Yeah, sure, she can, and, and again, it shows. Absolutely no valuation growth factor, she did it at zero percent to try to be as conservative as possible. And we know that's gonna go up.
And the other thing it doesn't consider is, obviously, we're doing a lift station, another one of those industrial lots of clean development, we add it to.
Right. Cause we won't do it until there's other development.
Right, but there's the eighteen month leg that we want to carry, right?
Yeah, she's, she's considered that. Actually, I think she's got it a little, I should, I just probably got everything a year too early, but. I mean, that's close enough for cats. And remember then, when. Like Convergent, when you get done with that five years of giving them the hundred percent they're generating, and then on six, a little bit, then you've got. That to flow. For. Fourteen more years. You know, to use, if something else comes.
For fourteen more years, but then they've already got all the other roadway stuff figured. Right? So we don't have to do that just because it's in this agreement, if we don't need it, is that correct? The stuff that you have listed as, like, later down the road, the turn lanes and the three laning on left of beer and.
Yeah.
We have timelines figured.
When we're ready to move on to those, we can discuss those, but yeah.
So just because they're, they're in this agreement, we're not obligated to do that, correct? That's my, that's my concern.
The. No, I mean, there's nothing obligated, that's just talking about participation and when we anticipate doing them, so there's some participations, um. So go ahead and discuss those items now, unless there's any other one. With Seventy Sixth or any of the other. Items.
I, if I, I would just say, something to. Take into consideration with Seventy Sixth Avenue. Construction, design, logistics, for lack of a better term standpoint, and we had dialogue about this at least at the last council meeting, or. Overhead power poles and, and. Overhead power lines that currently exist, not only, I mean, there's some big, I think they're one sixty one KV ITC lines, the bigger ones. Uh and then also there's underbuilt that is aligned to energies that. Would need to be relocated as part of this project, which is a big, a big task, a big expense, a big undertaking to. Just do, and so just the planning part of that is, is, there's value added and knowing that that needs to be done. You know, and that, that's part of the dialogue too, it's like, well. You know, to do some of it, we can move some of it, how does that work in and tie in, I'm not some, the engineer, but we've had initial dialogue, so. There is definite value added in getting a lot of those relocations done for an overall project sooner than later, from a planning perspective, so that at least they're in the right place. Now, or sooner than later, so that we can plan accordingly. For the water main, well, correct Shane?
E- exactly, yeah, that's, that's why, you know, if we did wanna get that constructed, Seventy Sixth Avenue point two six, I recommend we try and get moving on that stuff this fall, you know. Ordinating the relocation of those overhead electric lines, and then, you know. On the south side, we need some temporary construction, we need some some permitting, we need some for the culvert and stuff. And all that stuff, keep it in time, so. So moving on to then uh. Condition number twenty three, twenty four, twenty five. So those are the uh. Improvements along left of your road. Condition number twenty three is the uh northbound. Light turn lane, so if you're heading north on left of your road, and then you're turning. Turning right onto Seventy Sixth. That's northbound light turn lane. That's, that becomes warranted sooner. Uh basically, when the need for um. Seventy Sixth Avenue improvements are, are required to service. You know, future development a lot longer, lots three, four, five, six, seven, or eight, that would be needed, and. Since we are recommending to do Seventy Sixth for plain claim to be constructed in point twenty six, we recommend to go and do that right turn lane at that same time. And if you go back to the traffic memo on that last page that wrote down, planning cost estimates in the year that we planned on those. And again, they're just planning. And, and basically what we did, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, I mentioned, you know, we anticipate ten year build out for lots one, two, five. Now, this could be lots one, two, three, and. Six, seven, instead of five, whatever, like roughly five lots in ten years, last three lots being done in, in years selected through twenty. So basically, just looking at that window, assuming, you know, a lot of the goals, every couple of years, give or take. That's kind of how I would go about these, the timelines that, and then those prices that are in the last page of that memo. Are based on twenty twenty six dollars, and then we add inflation to them after twenty twenty six. So. The recommendation would be to do that northbound right turn, with the Seventy Sixth Avenue improvements whenever that's done, um. That's two hundred and forty thousand dollars additional cost.
Do we have to acquire any right of way or anything to do that?
Shouldn't have to. There's, there's a shoulder there, you basically have to bait out a little bit of the edge. Pay the right turn lane. There's none anticipated, when we get into it, obviously, we find out more, but usually with turn lanes on, like that, that's not. The owner would have some participation in that as well, that's about in the conditions. Um, since that's not, when we rise eligible, that's, you know, the rise portion of that would be. Applicable for their participation, so I think it's basically twenty five percent of those costs. The uh. Then. You'd have the southbound left turn lane, so if you go south on left of your road, turning left. On to Seventy Sixth Avenue. Those, the timing of those is, is kind of up in the air, but what we recommend is. If you get development on lots one or two or both, and lots, you know, a couple other of the. If you get development on lots one or two or both and lots, you know, a couple other of the six lots, two of the other six lots get development on. That's when we recommend constructing that left turn lane. And if you go back to that exhibit that you have in front of you on the table. Basically, how we would construct that is you currently have the existing two lanes that were overlaid a couple of years ago. We would just add a lane to the west side of that. So your current southbound through lane. Would become your southbound left turn lane and the lane that we add. Onto the west side, we need a southbound through. And, uh. Then we'd have order participation at the time that that would be done. I think that's also spelled out at twenty-five percent. And then the, uh, full. Third lane addition to create a continuous center left turn lane. We anticipate, the numbers we have for that is ten years out, we anticipate is probably, I think, sometimes ten, ten years or more, and that basically. Finished extending that additional lane on the west side of the existing roadway. From that closed left turn lane all the way up to East Southview Road. And, you know, based on the timing of that, we we tie. Participation on that to the owner of lot two, which. When that happens, that may still be Iowa land in development, or I'm sorry, Iowa land building. Or, you know, somebody could build on that and develop it and then shit could change. So to your, to your question, Mary Ann, um. You know, are you obligated to do that for? Um, for Iowa land building for this limited platform, no, it's, it's put in there. Um, to basically spell out when you do that, you know, who's responsible for doing it, the city is, and then the owner would have some participation, that's what is going on. And it's, it's one of those things where, you know, if you don't do. Like the southbound left turn lane. And. This whole primary plant gets built out and Iowa land buildings no longer involved, then you really don't have anybody to go back to. But. When it's recommended to be done, but. If there's not a big need for it, you lost that money, it's something that the council at that time would definitely consider. Cynthia, you think that's something we can coordinate, maybe you can get updated numbers, sure, and put them in our schedule, I can hear.
So we wanna add regen and the turn lane. Uh, the north one.
Yeah, I can, I can give you a breakdown.
Okay.
Alright, um.
But do we know what the total cost, I, I never did hear a number, do we know what the total cost for all of this is?
I should think. I have to add a couple of numbers to. Some of the initial numbers I had prepared were based on my twenty-six construction. So if we assume the sewer's out, we're, we're past that. I think those numbers were with participation. The owner of participation, kind of participation. I think the. It was seventy-sixth Avenue. Forty-one foot back to back, full length. The, uh. Water main along seventy-sixth Avenue. And the lift station is related to, which was that seven point three million. So then they include the turn lanes. And then include the impervent or. They stored water. Lots one and two. But as Cynthia mentioned, that was included in the. Breakdown that Maggie had done.
And that would include their tax rebate. Uh, so just to conversion is about one point two six five with. The estimate of five seventy-five for the utilities, six ninety-four, the property tax rebate. Um, and we, we did, um. Talked to Maggie about, you know, just the road and then the sewer and water. Or all of it at once, and she definitely recommended that we don't do all of it at once, that the sewer and water should wait based on more. Development. And, uh. That's how she kind of staggered her, uh. Projections here. Um, that we would do the conversion and the road right away and then the water and sewer. Couple of years at least later, if not.
This will be geo, geo debt then?
Um, you cannot do, um. SRF for water sewer for, uh, growth. Now, we could do a revenue, but then. You're, you, you have to raise your rates, and if we're gonna use tip to pay it back, then yes, it would be GL. Now, you could do an annual appropriation if we didn't want it to all count against our debt capacity.
What are we at, fifteen or something?
Oh, sorry, I did not bring that, that, that page.
A whole eighty percent. Fourteen or something.
Yeah, we, we, we have enough geo debt capacity. Um, we did talk to Maggie about that, um.
Including all the water improvements and everything.
Yeah. But again, we could do the annual appropriation, which we have one bond like that. We did not see, uh, a spike in interest rates that we were charged when we did that. And, uh, it works out great.
Nick, what's your thought? I was like forty-three percent. As we have, we have our debt load at forty-three percent available, right?
And we tried to reserve twenty percent.
Yeah, and I think that, that include. I think that are to twenty percent off the top, so forty-three percent or.
Would be available.
Would be available, but then you include all these other projects that you still have going on and has to pull from that forty-three percent.
Well.
Without these other tip dollars, really.
If with, if the water is. SRF, then no, not pulling for that. The, the well and the treatment is SRF. Right, uh, the bridge would. But we've already.
I believe our debt hasn't been done last month or four, so. And it's gone up in the last few years, we made a. So. Obviously, without calculating certain things next year, twenty-five, twenty-six, or fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Are, uh.
And that's probably her showing two and a half percent.
Yes.
We haven't been at two and a half percent any of the years out.
So, Mary Ann, if you add up all those thirty, thirty turn lanes and, uh. Participation and conversion and. Infrastructure improvements. It's, it's roughly eleven million dollars over the next. Ten plus years in particular.
That's all the extra road improvements and everything? So participation's now.
That's with participation in seventy-six and, uh, the sewer and water, it's not. I just got the numbers from that whole end turn lane. So if you, it's anticipation that.
I'll just clarify, if you add that working seven, I was mentioning, that does include our twenty percent fifty. Okay, that's right, that's our goal debt without twenty percent, correct? So the question, Cap, I was to ask itself. And I almost wanna punch myself in the face for saying that. If we build that road out, you know, if we build it, aren't we getting done? I just watched my kids, it's top of mind, I apologize. The other thing to consider is, and I know we've talked about this past, and Mary Ann and I have been on the council long enough to remember. Instruction cost. Continue the well, since it's twenty-twenty. Material, so well, and all that, about forty percent. They want somebody here for super lines up to heart, nice, it's about six dollars a meter foot now, so. So. I'm not saying, just because it's gonna be more expensive in the future to do it. But those are things to consider, and I know Mary Ann's apprehension is extending seventy-six. When it's not.
To nowhere, nothing will happen out there and we'll look, it'll be like a laughing stock. Since, uh, since, spend ten million dollars and. I'm concerned because the economy's turned out, people are laying off, it's not, I don't feel like it's conducive to like people running out and. Especially in Iowa, but.
Doesn't.
I'm very, I'm very conservative, so, but.
Stop the road, you kind of squeeze this.
So, I just don't. What with tip or other stuff?
Other thoughts.
Those are different pockets. I mean, you really have to track the money. You know, you're, you're still never gonna be claiming. Close to what's available for tip. And if you don't claim, and every tip dollar that we certified for, only thirty-three cents comes out of our pocket. Sixty-six cents or, you know. Comes from the other sources. And so if you don't do the tip projects, you don't get the improvements. You know, if the development happens, they're gonna be screaming for it, and they're gonna want it right now, and we're gonna have to scramble. But if you don't do any of them. That money just goes away. And you have to use it as an economic development tool.
Again, I go back to, why can't we design this as a two-lane concrete road, just like we did on left of beer, and when and if. We get to the point where they need the expansion, we add the turn lane in, like you're doing on left of beer.
You can do that.
Or we add, you know, we add the lanes.
Much more expensive to come back and do it at that time.
But it might not be needed for thirty years.
It may not, but.
That's why, you know, and then.
It might be needed in five.
I don't. Just looking at, like, they're very dumb, they're, they're. Their own things that, oh, we don't think this is gonna be needed till twenty or thirty.
What would the difference be between a two and a three lane?
It'd be about, it'd be about a half million dollars if you did the full length. And if you, when you come back, it's gonna be.
So why would you say that only a half a million dollars on a ten million dollar project?
If you did a two-lane roadway versus a three-lane or.
Yeah, well, the road is ten million. That's the sewer, the water, and that's everything.
It's five, wasn't it?
Yes, five.
But you're still only saving a half million dollars, you know? That doesn't mathematically compute.
Because you're out there doing everything except you're just not paying. All you're doing is saving out a little bit of concrete, most of the sub, sub base, sub base.
And your argument is the material, you're only saving half out. Five hundred thousand for all the labor. And, and here it's like. Whether it's four inch foot or. Eight or thirty.
If you, if you build it in two lanes. And then you have to come back and widen it twenty years ago, whatever it is. Now your strong source gotta be redone.
I'll be dead by then, I don't care, it'll be somebody else's issue.
But that's not what's best for the city.
Also ruining the traffic is, is terrible, and now you've got all the traffic control and everything.
Kind of justify building the road to nowhere is. We can't even pave our own streets now.
Yeah.
It's really hard to justify that.
It's a two-lane, thirty-three foot, we're three lanes, forty-one. That's alright.
Two lanes, thirty-three. Thirty-three to forty, yeah. Yeah, the big difference is. Fortunately, Fairfax is ninety percent residential, can't use the tip for that, but you wanna. Go alive. That's getting expensive. That, that's why this is, tip is there and it's available for this project. It's not to. That isn't. I understand what you're saying, that is the difference is.
So you couldn't use it downtown, Fairfax.
Exactly, it's the fifth to improve the roads downtown Fairfax that you're gonna have to do, I mean. Be those moderate income.
Is there a savings to doing this in asphalt as opposed to concrete? I'm doing, we're doing a section in Lynn County right now that is way bigger than this, like one turn lane is. Literally five hundred thousand dollars, and we're over excavating another twelve, twelve inches down. So it's way, built way better than this is. So, I'm just like, and so that's.
Well, this isn't designed yet, how do you know that?
So if you did, I'm just saying, so I can replace a whole, whole lane for five hundred thousand dollars and with asphalt. Eight inches of asphalt. And then it's a whole, like thirty-two feet. So, and that's five hundred thousand dollars, so like three lanes would be. A million and a half, so where, how does this get to be so expensive for? Even, even if you just say the roadway is five. I meant a million and a half, for the same thing with asphalt as opposed to the concrete. So I'm just like. I don't understand the numbers.
Well.
Why it's so expensive.
You have engineering, right away acquisition, all that figured into that cost.
Well, I think you said we didn't have that much right of the acquisition here, if I didn't, we'd have any acquisitions for the, for that, but.
Seventy-sixth Avenue, they'll be left just temporary, it's been out to construction, it's on the south side, it needs some. Givements for the culverts, like that.
But you said the road alone was five million, and I meant a million and a half.
That's everything, that's everything tied to. It's not just the pavement on the road, it's not, it's just the layer or something, it's everything, it's just more and sooner, it's. I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, any idea what utility, what utilities you're gonna run? Along seventy-six?
Utilities.
The much more utilities.
So.
Is that participation or how does that work?
They should pay for most of that themselves, because they're in the, in the fight of. So we have a little bit in the budget for it, but my understanding that shouldn't be on. On ITC in the line to be like.
I think it's shift of variables. More or less keep it all overhead, everything, right?
I think they wanna keep more overhead.
Cheaper way to do it, yeah.
I don't know what happened to our chance.
That's supposed to be on.
Yeah, it always is, if, if we plug it in, it makes a weird sound. I don't know if our ball, ball just went up.
You could come up with an asphalt alternative.
We can, I, we've done that in the past. It's not much different at all.
And that's part of the design. Process, which we're not.
Yeah, I mean, this is just, these are just planning numbers. Um, well, we base it off of, for, like this eight inch of concrete, twelve inches of paint or something.
For, for what it's worth, building a road. And, uh, it's either, it's based on their design standards, we looked at asphalt versus concrete, concrete is actually a little, a little bit cheaper, shocked me. Honestly, I mean, but it's just. Fluctuation, oil, everything else, but. I, I would assume that asphalt would be cheaper as well, it wasn't. In twenty-eight or twenty.
I just know we're, we're doing one for Lynn County right now, and it's. Eight inches of asphalt and twelve inches of rock with another twelve inches of rock. So it's substantial, and it's way bigger than this is. And that's removing and then putting it back. For five hundred. So I just, I just, the numbers don't make sense to me, why this is so much more, but.
Do you need percent savings if we go? Just big, secret or. Roughly, it's all, it'll be. Water. Roughly, it's all, it'll be water.
Well, water's not part of that.
Oh, right.
It's just, it's just the roadway and the storm sewer again. I, I.
It's about two thirds.
It's, it's about two thirds, um. You don't have, wouldn't have the culprits either on that grid, so that's. If it's five million, maybe it's three and a half. Real long. But I don't know. Wouldn't necessarily know where Big Seer Court's gonna go, and this, I can get a look at fluctuation. So they mix a bigger lot or a smaller lot or something. Shifts that to.
I asked Maggie if we can set this up for like annual appropriations, like you were saying, where does it go against certain capacity?
Yeah, that's certainly an option. Like I said, that's what we did for that four point five million, and it's working smooth, and again, when we sold that bond. She made a statement to me, she goes. This interest rate is right where it should be.
Was she afraid it was going to affect our, our?
Sometimes annual appropriations could be a point or so higher, but she said we did not see that when we sold our four point five. And then, I don't know if everybody understands that, so annual appropriation, if you remember, uh. Last month, I think, maybe, we, uh, did a resolution to approve the. Uh, annual payment for fiscal twenty sixth. On the annual appropriation that we have now. So that way, when, uh, you see your TIP certification forms in front of you, either next month or November. It'll have that in there for fiscal twenty sixth. Um, but legally, the city can walk away from that debt at any time and say, no. We're not gonna appropriate payment. Now, that's not good for your future property, and we certainly wouldn't recommend it. But that's why only the amount that you've certified in of that, uh, annual appropriation resolution counts against your GEO debt limit.
That's why I know you have many internal conversations to be had, but do you have any? Comments at this time on the proposed development agenda?
Yeah, no, I appreciate all of the work and time and effort into it, and your, your spot, uh, barely. You know, there's been some new information that just came out and we need to internally discuss amongst I Oland and Building Company confirms some things with Traverio. But just at Park Seater Rapids, and then also Convergent, just to make sure everything's. In sync with the business terms that we have, and we still need to work out some of those business terms with them, so. I think, I, I think we're headed in the right direction, we're getting more clarity, it's just some of the mechanics. Uh, some things have been modified, obviously, so I, you know, from our perspective, I know that. We appreciate having this work session to have the dialogue, and I believe we're, you know, initially anticipating and hoping to get some action on this, the first meeting in October, I think we'll know. Here in the next few days, I think we, we may be requesting that be pushed. You know, a month, you know, for our own internal purposes, but I think obviously as the council and staff, you have some more information to, to win as well, so. But I think, after some more discussions, we're, we're getting very close, just, you know, may not be ready in a couple of weeks, but maybe six weeks, we'd be a lot more comfortable.
Council, do you have any more questions for Shane or Cynthia? Or Maggie?
We're just looking at a few different scenarios on building material for the road, how far out to go, whether it be. You know, and, and again, like we talked about just six seconds ago, where. Seater Court goes might shift east or west, or do we wanna do it like to Maple Grove Road, for example? But is that kind of what we wanna get some ideas on for next time is?
Cause if we do all this stuff, and then, and then it gets triggered to where someone buys something else, then we immediately will have to. Have the money to do the access road and the lift station. Right?
Right, and Maggie's got that, she's just got it, um. Two years after the road goes online, that's all. It'll probably be longer than that, but maybe not. According to your projec- prediction, it'll be way longer than that. And now you're worried about it being faster?
Well, it's taking us so long for Cedar Rapids to have one ten inch, or any huge one, but.
Do we wanna see some numbers to add, like. Just paving the Maple Grove Road? See what the cost is, difference from back and there to all the way to the end? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, uh, I think some, some of the council feedback is, what's the cost of only going so far, as opposed to going to the city? So I just chose Maple Grove Road, cause it's a natural intersection.
This is a planning document, is it necessarily mean the roads will be whatever it says on this plan?
Correct, it might shift, yeah, and then the second thing is, um. Building material, asphalt versus concrete, if there is any serious price difference on that.
Okay, well, we won't be.
Playing standpoint.
Yeah, we're not gonna get into design.
Uh, yeah, I mean.
Before you make the decision.
If, if. Again, you know, we try to estimate it conservative, so when we say five point one million or whatever, hopefully the project comes in underneath that. If we're talking, you know. Five dollars a linear foot difference, and it saves, you know, fifty thousand dollars. These are planning numbers, these are final construction, final design. And it's not gonna be, from a planning standpoint, difference between asphalt and, and. B C C is gonna be significant enough to change the planning. So you're basically just paying us to.
Design twice?
Yeah.
How far is it out to that other intersection, like, now are you looking at?
That's by, yeah, that's, I mean.
Pretty clear to Maple Grove Road.
Oh, you're still at about two thirds?
I would put it in, in that range, yeah.
Would you be? If we're looking at that, you want us to look at that with the forty one foot build out, or thirty three, or? I don't recommend thirty three, cause. It's a lot cheaper to do it all front, but. I mean, it's not specifically cheaper, but long term, it's cheaper.
I'm probably looking too far down there, what we need to guarantee. I'm probably looking too far down the road, but I think we need to talk to Cedar Rapids or Lynn County or whoever, and see what their timeline is for building out seventy six.
Well, they just did part of seventy six from Edgewood to.
They just sealed coating.
This is seal coat though.
Well, that's just throwaway.
I'm talking about.
They didn't do it.
Not talking about.
Well, they did from Sixth Street all the way over to Edgewood Road in three lane, and it's. As far as what's actually developed on that is.
There's been quite a bit of development out there, the guy who did, who were out there a long time ago, and there's significantly more there now than when I was out there.
But you're needing, as far as new stuff, a lot of that stuff's all been there forever. So, I don't know if it really. You know, like, um, the gas companies, you know, some of that, but some of the silly things are.
Well, I mean.
A lot of it's not developed.
Just from Fairfax's standpoint, you had Traverio going three years ago, Regen, and, you know, Convergence's not there yet, they're pretty close, so.
Their taxes are cheaper, we're cheaper, we're easier.
Well, that's, that's what you're talking about, it's planning for Fairfax, not Cedar Rapids.
Right.
So I mean, you're, you've seen industrial growth over the last forty years, that's.
That's true.
That's been there, so I mean, I think you have some justification. You know, to plan for, you know, anticipate for growth at a reasonable rate. And it's exactly that is, nobody knows.
I would say you stay at the forty one foot design, just, sounds like it's about ten percent difference between thirty three and forty one.
And when Shane comes back with, uh, the difference for the lane. Just remember that that's your immediate savings, not long term savings, and you have to look at, well, what really difference does that make in the payment?
Right.
You know, I mean, come down to it, how, how much does that change what your payment is each year? I'm guessing not a lot, but we could look at that.
And I think, I think what Mary Ann's getting at, is not only is it the cost, and I understand monthly payments might not differ a little, but. I think we also have, there's other things to consider. Um, from a roadway perspective, meaning, how long were we talking about the intersection of Vanderbilt and, um, Church Street? And I get what Mary Ann says, cause we have to answer ultimately, look at this beautiful forty one foot road that goes the eight ton develop rock lots. Sorry, your roads are still passed and they, uh, flood all the time down by, uh, the Star Barn, so.
Sorry, our streets are still code, but we're gonna pave this, so, and they don't, they don't. They don't understand it's a different bucket, and they know, the, all they, all they know is.
But that's what a, all of our jobs is, is to communicate that to our residents. Um, that you really are using their money wisely by doing it. Or they, you know, you can wait until TIP's gone and pay for all of it from the city.
Mary Ann, go through, go and explain to him.
Just gonna wear one of those boards around town when I walk. I get it, it's just. To the normal person, it's really hard to explain how it. How it's free money, but it's not free money. And we won't get, you know, like, we have all the rebates back and this and that, so we actually, they won't see any of that money for a while. Because it's gonna take a while to pay everybody back, and. You know, I mean, so eventually we will get more of that money back, but.
Anything else, Council? Or Shane, or Cynthia?
The street improvements for Left Beer, so, you know, the turn lanes. Could you certify new TIP to districts now, all? Development, like, say it's a lot later on down the road or something, then you could use it towards a.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
All the turn lanes, we're not gonna do it right out of gate. Let's say you just certify lots one and two for your district, TIP district. Could you, can we use TIP dollars in other lots for road improvements, obviously, yes.
You could, if, if development happens there, so there's increment available.
Right.
And you bring it into your urban renewal plan and, and create a TIP district. That starts the clock for that new area, and you can use those TIP dollars anywhere in the urban renewal area. So yes, you can use them on the turn lane.
Right.
Yes, by tying those things.
We'd have to amend the TIP map, if, if.
Right, right.
Description, so they, where those improvements are, that's included as the map.
Right, yeah, and to include the new development in the, in the urban renewal area and, and establish a TIP district, but yeah, you, there's some steps to go through, but yes, you can use that. And, you know, that's one of our points, that, that, you know, Maggie's not showing any other new. New development, well, we know when the sewer and water have to happen, there's gonna be other. Improvements made, you know, so there's going to be more, this is the least amount of TIP dollars you would have to pay for the things. We know there's gonna be more, or the sewer and water won't.
The TIP numbers you gave us were just for Traverio and. Traverio, really? One, the new lots one and two, was it?
Our entire TIP.
For the whole district?
For the whole city.
Oh, one point four.
One point four.
Okay.
Is what we're currently not using.
So that has nothing to do with the Traverio site?
Well, it's included.
Included by the best portion of it.
Yeah, so it includes the existing stuff, it doesn't, wouldn't include, like, we'd have to add.
Right.
This.
Right.
Doesn't include them.
Doesn't include them.
Right, doesn't include Regen, cause it's not on the tax roll yet. Yeah. And for. Six years, we're proposing what would be generated from Convergence build out, would only be used. To rebate them.
Rebate them and, yeah. For the rebate and, uh, reimbursement to the super since.
So it's all rebate, you don't actually get any of the good out of that for a while.
I had heard, I don't know, I don't know how many meetings you guys have had about this, but thanks lots.
Yes, thank you for that. It's been hard enough just to sit through this one.
I was just thinking that Mary Ann's comment about public perception on a lot of these things, and Cynthia and I have talked internally about. How other projects that are more visible that may be paid for by TIP, she actually put something in the facts a couple of months ago about. Non-infrastructure projects that TIP has helped fund, so potentially. With. That new Playstation thing that's gonna go up over there by Kirkwood, you know, if we, could have done that here instead, and.
Yes, that'll be the case, we just need to make sure they understand it's not their tax dollars paying, well, it is, but it's not.
So that extra.
Yeah, that we're not increasing, we're not proposing to, right. Pay for it. And really, that's on all of us to communicate, you know, what the decisions were based on, cause the majority of people aren't here or won't listen to the. Recording.
I won't listen to the recording.
Well, you were here.
Anything else from anybody?
I have these ice cream truck. I think we're, I think we're just still in now.
Or is, yes. I think the, the productive discussion is probably ended. You know, somebody has. Anything else?
Um, can we talk about anything, uh, or the other comments or not on this one?
Chris, Mary Ann first. So, under Mayor's comment, just a reminder that. The M P O representative will be here Friday from one to three talking about long range transportation. Did you expect, Shane?
Yes.
You're all invited, I know it's a tough time. All of you working. During the day, but if anybody can attend, that would be great. That's all I.
Um, did the library post anything about their presentation, I don't, give me, was any of that anywhere, or have other council people seen?
They took minutes, but, um. Their next, their next step is to have a conversation with the entire library board at their next meeting before anything goes public. And before anything gets presented to the whole council.
But they had a meeting, right?
Right.
It was an open meeting, right?
Yes, yeah, Mary Ann was there, and Dan was there. Yeah, they just, they did not.
I'm, my comment is going to be that we asked them to make an addition, and they. Did that, but they didn't.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate it.
It was, I can tell you without a doubt, it was not what we were envisioning when we sent them on their way to, to do this. And. The addition that they put on is not really an addition, it's a brand new building. So it isn't really what we had talked about. I, it's, I know it's not what we thought of when we said. Look at, putting an addition on the library, cause it can, you know, do these things for you, and we'll look at doing a building like over behind the Dairy Queen, whenever, somewhere down the road. That is not what happened, so I'm just saying, if you could get eyes on it or look at it and have, kind of see.
Seriously, if we can get all emails, something, people can review it, so, always stop on their nuts hard at the next meeting and tell them, no, this is.
I, I can tell you, it's a thing of beauty, it's very nice, it's very professional, all of those things.
Was there a demo rebuild?
They're gonna re, they're gonna remodel the existing library, including like moving the bathrooms. And the new adjacent building is connected by like a, kind of like a little walkway or breezeway, and it's all glass. You just have to see it, but it's not.
So they explained the reason why they had to do it is because the building today. The, the walls where the roof comes down so low, that. The more that they impacted the existing building, more expensive it was gonna get, so it was easier to do as little to the existing building.
Did they ever say, Dan, what the total pack, what the total dollar amount was? I love before that had something else going on.
I asked a few times, um, the, the last number they threatened, they were using, I believe it was the. I believe it's Cedar Rapids Library they're using as an example, um, but it was around two and a half. Give or take.
Two and a half million.
Hmm, and it would burn the life, I think they. Mentioned was like nine thousand square feet. Mentioned was like nine thousand square feet total would bring the library to.
But that includes the old library. Did they also, did that include parking and or buying the lot on the corner from the bank?
Um.
So they are encompassing the entire um, site for the Sonic Sport. And the parking, now they're looking to the bank lot on the corner for all their parking and they were talking to the bank about. Oh, Jesus. And or the Legion partnering, they would have to buy that for parking then. Uh, if, there's just a lot and I, like I said, the building's beautiful. They did a great job. They did all these focus groups. It's, it's nice, but it's. It wasn't in our, I don't think it's in our, our budget.
Well, they better get fundraising.
I would just suggest that they, the library, library board. Walks us through all the steps. Sounds like what you're saying is they have this. Beautiful building, use your words. I don't doubt that. But to ease and keep us in the loop with what's going on, I mean.
I just think it would be helpful if you all got eyes on it sooner than later and so we could maybe address stuff before it gets.
The current plan is that the library board, when they meet again, which is the day before our next council meeting. Because some of the library board members, it was their first time saying anything. They want to talk amongst the board members.
Sure.
Before presenting to council. The timing is bad because it's just a day.
But if they had a public meeting on it, that information is available to the council.
Correct.
Yeah. And so they can't keep it from the council. They should send it out if the council.
Question, right, if any of you would like to see what it looks like.
How about they just forward all the information this thing gives?
I just think, I, there's just things, questions, and I.
I'll forward you what I get.
Very, very nice, but I just don't think it's what we were. It's not what I was envisioning and like addressing, like there's a lot of wasted space in the courtyard area that doesn't get used and they. They decided not to do anything with that. They just left it and, and focused on the other buildings, so.
I think Dan was saying their argument is, and I was thinking the same thing, their courtyard space isn't to encompass that into the building then onto it, it'd be more cost prohibitive.
I mean, I think, sorry, I was gonna say, I think it's a good, good point. Um, and my, a couple of conversations I had with, with O B N about the eventual council presentation is. But here, you know, bringing some of the background into it, um, I didn't know how they were gonna present it to. Yes, it was the foundation part of the board. Was it a couple of weeks ago, week ago? Uh, but the, to go through the reason why this came up. Is because it would cost too much to do this, the courtyard. The courtyard looks nice from, you know, it's a, it's a great brand entrance, but could you do something different? But then it came into, well. Would you rather us focus on that area at. You know, three times the, the square foot rate versus just putting this. You know.
So those are, I mean, those are things we need to talk about, but I can tell you what is not. What I was envisioning or I think what we were budgeting for, so.
So I think part of the design too. Because I, I don't remember who brought it up, something about it was. It relatively is a square. It's the fan side is, it's the most cost effective shape.
Right.
That's what I'm looking at, I mean. As far as, as money goes, I, I, there's a library foundation, I. Actually have no idea what that conversation is between the board and the foundation as part of what's gonna be.
The foundation is new, so that's something they just started, but.
We will request info and offer renewal.
Yeah, I just, I just think it would be nice if you guys just at least wanted that to see and then you could have your own, draw your own opinions, have your own questions. Do you know, whatever, but.
Maybe they have a lot of money.
I just think it would be nice to kind of get your heads around it a little bit before we have a public meeting, because I was like, oh. And then I was like, all right. I have to go.
I have one question. You, you mentioned a couple of times in our budget, Cynthia, even in our capital improvement plan, it's. Right now, any money, we have the twenty five thousand that.
Um, it's in our current budget.
We don't have anything beyond that doing.
Well, it's on our C, C I P for five years or.
There's, I think there was like a new library and the C I P for like ten years out.
Yeah.
Think we have anything, our C I P for an addition period.
I think we just told them that we would, depending on what they came up with for the addition, I think we told them that we would try to help. But what, you know, depending what the cost was. So.
Because isn't there a two million dollar? Trust fund or something that they have to use for the next amount of years? I think it's out of ten or something.
Something like that.
I'll ask for those details.
Yeah, Vernon, Vernon left them that or Sherbene, yeah, and they. They have so long to use it or it has to go to another charitable, you know, something. Kathy's the executor, the librarian is the executor for that account, so she knows like how it works, but.
Okay. We can get that and. Share that and then know that it's subject to change because the library board, that was their.
Bam, they've seen it either.
They hadn't seen it either, so. And. And I passed along some questions that I had as well.
Good.
So. So it's not gonna happen, happen overnight. First comment, Cynthia, did you have anything else?
No.
She's exhausted.
Well, she just got back from the conference, but yes, she's been really crunching the numbers since she's been back.
Is that Sioux City?
Yes, Sioux City.
The boy, right?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn, ready?
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you, counsel.